Call to order. Everyone willing, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Good evening, thank you all for coming. We have no one who has signed up to deliver a public comment, so we'll move right into the report of the secretary, and I will entertain motion, please, to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Wednesday, December 18th, 2024. Second, Heather?
Thank you. Comments or questions?
No, I said nothing.
Excellent job. In that case, all in favor? That is four of. Moving on to the report of the chair, a couple of things very quickly. We will have our next town officials meeting on the second February, Wednesday of February, which is the 12th. And secondly, I wanted to mention that the board conducted a workshop prior to this meeting, where we kind of set the table for our budget discussions that will be coming up over the course of the next couple of months. So some preliminary discussions around priorities and financial realities, and so we're in a good position to proceed into that season. And that's all I have for the report of the chair. That brings us to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. If you don't mind, I'm going to go off the script for a second. Brett's been not feeling great, so I'm going to let him go first. So he came in. We are tonight going to ask the board to take action on the vision of the graduate. We covered and just wanted to give the board an opportunity if they have any questions about the document or any feedback they want to give to Brett, so that we can clarify before we take the vote later this evening. So I'll turn it over to all of you.
So as you know, last month, two of our teachers presented the work that's been done on the vision of the graduate. Technically, we do not have to get board approval on the vision of the graduate, but I thought, I want to. Like, I want us to partner together, and this not just be something that a couple of teachers or admin or whoever put up together, it's something that we've kind of all worked on together. So what I'm asking for is more of your blessing to approve the work that's been done so far, so they can now continue to move forward. And as you know, we have our two-year visit in November. So they come back and they look at where you, what was your process for the vision of the graduate? Where are you at? And then what have you done since that culmination of that process? So happy to answer any questions I can, but just kind of here today to say, can we get your blessing tonight?
I thought it was great work, and I appreciate you sharing everything quickly. Thank you.
Lots of exciting stuff in there.
Yep.
Brett, I will say that even some of the stuff that you talked about two weeks ago came up tonight when we did our workshop. You know, so I think that capstone project idea was really appealing in a lot of ways.
And I'm trying to do everything I can to let this be a staff-driven of what it looks like. And I haven't gone to them and say, you know, I did a capstone in my old school. We did student-led conferences at the three schools I was at before that, and I wanted to kind of evolve on its own, so.
That's very good. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Feel better.
Your terms would get out of here.
We had put on the agenda for kind of a check-in with all of our schools around student engagement, student voice, student agency, and so Jerry and Nina are going to just kind of share kind of where they are with that, give you some examples, and just kind of a little check-in on how we're doing with that. Go. Who would like to go first?
I'm just going to help Nina get her presentation set up.
How about in the spirit of time, I could go to number four? Just wanted to let you know that I was informed earlier this week that Tiffany Gilli, who is a health teacher at Marshville Middle School, has resigned her position. And so we will, in all likelihood, put a long-term substitute in that position for the remainder of the school year and the post-ad job in March. Just our candidate pool is much stronger typically when we do it in springtime, when students have graduated from college and people are looking to make moves at that time. So just wanted to make you wish, obviously, Miss Gilli well.
Is this an immediate resignation or at the end of the school year?
Now.
Now.
During the school year, yes. Yep. Okay. We're going to be efficient tonight.
Do you want to go to students? Yes.
Within your packet, we have a budget workshop schedule. And I'd like to go over this with you. It is a little bit tricky this year. Part of the issue that we run into is just the following of meeting dates and how they are occurring later in the month. So this is our proposed draft schedule. The budget would be presented to the board on the 5th of May, May, March. Then on the 19th, we would have an FNF meeting, and then we would immediately after that would have about an hour and 15-minute budget workshop where we talk about the middle school, high school athletics, and adult education budgets. On April 2nd, we'd have a budget workshop where Elliott Central Great Works and Special Education would present. On the 16th of April, would be the Facilities and Finance Committee's meeting for about a half hour. And then the 16th after that, at 5:30 to 7:00, would be Transportation Maintenance and Central Office Federal Grants Technology. This is where it gets a little bit interesting. There are two competing laws that we're struggling with, and Ryan did a really nice job of just summarizing it down below. But the town has a statute that they have to follow, and the school has to have a statute that we follow, and they conflict with each other. And it's both basically around 30 days. And so what was happening for the town is that if we followed our typical schedule and we did our meeting May 7th, and then we did our district budget meeting May 21st, that would not give the town of Elliott or the town of South Borwick enough time to get the absentee ballots out and meet that legal guideline. I think they need about 30 days to be able to do that. And so that obviously put things in a really tough spot. From our perspective, we have to have that posted for seven days before we can take any action on it. And so that pushes the timeframe out a little bit more as well. And so if we moved things to the 30th, which would mean we would move our May 7th board meeting to the 30th of April, and then that would push the district budget meeting to Monday, the 12th, that gets us in compliance with our state mandate, and it gets the town of Elliott and the town of South Borwick within the day of their requirements. That's as close as we can probably get it from a law perspective, just being respectful of the three entities and each having different pressures. And so I wanted to put that out to the board to see if that made sense and if that was okay with everybody.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so the key thing is we wound up having three board meetings in April.
Three board meetings in April, one board meeting in May.
Yes, and the district budget meeting would be off-cycle. We used to do it on Wednesday, there was a regularly scheduled meeting.
That's great.
There would have to be an off-cycle meeting.
That's great.
Yeah.
And it typically worked out better when it was like, when it's the 1st of May, when we have our meeting, and then the 15th, you know, we're close enough that we wanted to even move it a day earlier, we would be okay. But the way that meeting falling on the 7th really puts us behind the eight balls this week. So the only curveball would be this, is that if after the April 16th meeting, there were some things that happened or there are additional questions from the board, we would have to schedule another budget workshop. We could do that at any point with the board, but like that, that would be the only thing where we would be a little bit off-cycle. Yep. We've typically been able to have it done at that point in time, but in the event that we needed to, we could always schedule an additional workshop if need be. And just for history, I don't, I mean, Joe, you might have been here when we used to do this, but we used to do an all-day Saturday, where we came in on a Saturday and every group came in on Saturday and presented over one day, like rather than doing three or four budget workshop nights, we just did it one day. The board wanted to move away from it, I think Dr. Nash wanted to move away from it, but there are other options. If this format in the future doesn't work for us, we can always look at that if that's something that the board wants to do in the future.
Okay.
We're not locked into this. This is just something that was created after something else that was kind of moved away from.
Okay.
That was probably 15 years ago now, almost. Do you remember that?
I have a vague recollection of it being talked about. I don't remember that.
I remember being nervous as heck sitting in the waiting room at the superintendent's office, like, oh gosh, what questions am I going to guess?
This is my 12th year on the board. I don't remember that I was on the board when we did that, but I remember it being talked about.
Yeah, it was always a snowy Saturday, it felt like, so anyway. Okay, perfect. So I will talk to Wendy, she will be extremely thankful of our partnership and just kind of work collaboratively. The other thing, just to be clear, but I did mention today with the both town managers, is that it's going to be really important that we have representatives from the town at the entire budget meeting, you know, the budget validation meeting, and so that they'll be there the entire time, whereas they had left to kind of really honor the meeting last year, and that just created more confusion for everybody and put some pressure on the district that we didn't have any additional help with putting pressure on that meeting. And so they'll be there the entire time, so just wanted to make sure we had that conversation already. Okay? Dr. De'Aaron?
Can I jump in just real quick on that last topic? And then we'll just, I would just recommend that you all take this one and put it in your calendar right now.
Thank you.
So we did our schools together, because when we were just working on it alone, we realized that we really have so many really similarities between both schools, so we kind of, we, yeah, which is a good thing, so we broke it down a few, a little bit between both schools, but this is our little presentation. So we, just our introduction, when we really thought about student engagement, it's really what it's all about at the elementary school. We really want kids to be engaged, to love learning, to love school, and whatever that looks like. So we broke it down into early intervention, MTSS, family engagement, social-emotional engagement, relationship that builds engagements, and then enrichment that we hope to just build a level of school, so. Again, when we really talked about it, early intervention is really the same at both schools, and that's when you really catch kids and you do universal screeners right away, where we just, you know, see what they need academically, what kind of learners they are. We talked a lot together about our special education, that's again, how to, we're fairly creative in special education, it's just not a one, you know, it just really is different for every child, early identification and inclusion.
And this year, the early pre-K and the adaptive P have been wonderful.
Can I share something?
Yeah.
One of the things that you may not realize that we do is that our pre-K students start school about a week later, roughly, and so we bring each one of those students in to do assessments with them before the school year starts, just to be able to try to customize what they need and be able to give them support right off the bat. So it's one of those things that maybe you just don't hear about a lot, but we do as part of our regular process.
Yeah, they do, and they do the same as kindergarten and our three-year-olds, where they do hour law, and they have an hour individual section with the teacher. So that's just me answering every single question, and we know exactly where they're going, where their, what allergy, all those things that you need to hook them.
Families are there as well. The families are there as well.
Yep.
Just a great, great way to transition those families into schools as well.
So MTSS is something we both have. It's a process to ensure that each child gets what they need, all students are engaged. It's a way to problem-solve what children need in order to continue to learn to grow. This is their first group, and it's very much data-driven.
So that's the whole idea, like everyone gets what they need, and we really just get creative on what that looks like for different kids. So family engagement, we broke this down to both schools, so we'll both, again, a lot of overlap, but just kind of like more exactly what we do. So at Central, we do a big art and literacy night, where we invite families in to do artwork, and also we have a book theme, we have a PE and math night. As both schools, our PTO is really heavily involved, and this year especially, it's really growing. We're kind of changing hands a little bit, but trying to just perpetuate everything that they've done. They've done so much for us. We do a lot with volunteers, and we've tried to really up it, and we got a little away from it for a little while, but we have volunteers of all ages and families, community members. We have concerts, our art show, our book fair. As in newsletters, we do individual school newsletters, I mean, classroom newsletters, and we do a school-wide newsletter as well. And as both schools, we have "Howdy" with our attendance, it really has made a big difference. I think that's really engaged families and to know that we want the kids at school, and different, different ways of that. And then, of course, conferences, and so much more that our, our teachers do. They reach out to families all, all, all the time, so.
So our parent group is a peeps group, and I had a meeting with them after school today. It's a bigger group than we've had in the past this year. They're already getting ready to start talking about our race, which is our, our big fundraiser. Teachers have weekly or monthly newsletters. I'm doing a monthly newsletter. The specialist team started a newsletter this year that's been received really well. Conference night, we usually try to tie in the art show or a book show, so there's other things for families to do, sometimes the math games during conferences as well. Race for Education is huge, it's attended by our whole school, parents come, it's just a great day. We have family picnics and parents volunteer to help, it's, it's an amazing day for everybody. New this year, we're having a family night for a puppet show, and we're also doing a literacy night with an author, Chris Van Duzen from Maine, so we're excited about that.
Sure, so also good, just talking about social-emotional, we do really concentrate on the whole child and what that looks like. Again, very similar at both schools, we're both, you know, responsive classroom is a huge part of our culture. Every single classroom has a morning meeting, we all have it around the same time, around 8:30 to 9:00, so every single classroom, third, you know, three-year-olds up to third grade. We have a social-emotional curriculum, it's taught to all students. Mrs. Cleary does kimochis, zone of regulation, mindfulness, mood meter. Every classroom has a calm-down corner, so that it's like a place where kids can go if they just need a moment or need a break. Also, this is, kind of things are blurred together, but I just added in that we've been doing a lot of work with the career pathways at the high school, so that students that are looking to start careers, they've come into work with our special needs pre-K classroom and also been doing some work in the office, and we have, and they come with an adult, so it's just really powerful. And we have a student that's working with Mrs. T D on, he wants to be, work with kids in, in the physical education setting, so he's been doing a lot of work with us. We have Hawk Buddies, again, that's our high school students that have come and mentored our students, and also the Cromwell Center to talk about disabilities.
We have a lot of the same things again, and I'll pop down to, we have reading buddies with our kindergarten and third graders, and I happen to be up in one of the third-grade classrooms last year, it's last week, it was a lot of fun to see the older kids mentoring the little kids and the smiles on the little kids' faces. Sometimes they go to the kindergarten class, sometimes they come up to the third-grade classes, so it's, it's really great. Cromwell Center for Ability Awareness, Northeast Passages through UNH, and they come and they teach the children how to play games and wheelchairs. It's really a wonderful activity and program. And then our guidance council has a great kindness challenge in January, which is amazing for so many reasons.
When we really think about engagement, I think we both, as in all the schools, relationship is key, that's just how you engage students, and we make it an absolute priority to have every child has a relationship with, at least there are at least a few adults, most likely by, by the time they leave, they have relationships with many, many adults. So we begin our day outside as a community, so they get to know almost all the staff outside. We do silent mentors, so every so often, we do an activity where we put all the names of all the kids in the whole school, and we, as a whole staff, decide, we have like kind of a rubric of what makes a relationship, and we checkmark if we have a relationship with a student. It's surprising, usually the kids that don't have relationships are not the ones you always think, so then we do a silent mentor, so we assign a staff member, a volunteer, to mentor that student without the student knowing, so kind of going out of their way to invite them to lunch or to just check in on them. Again, responsive classroom, that's just the, that's the whole crux of responsive classroom, is relationship with adults, relationships among each other. We do Friday assemblies, every Friday, where kids, every child has a chance throughout the year to share four things about themselves to the whole community. So it's really my favorite part, my favorite day of the week, because the kids are so cute, what they share, and I always have to read it beforehand, because sometimes it's really shocking, so you have to like, really make sure. But it does, like last week, we had a little boy that he said that he just wanted everyone to know he was grateful for his life, so it was just like, he was just so sweet, so. And I guess that building community, because everybody gets to hear about the kids, you know, they get to know the kids starting at a really young age. As both schools, responsive classroom, the first six weeks of school is part of responsive classroom, is when you're just building community and relationships, and everything else, you know, building routines, everything else comes later.
Responsive classroom, sorry, responsive classroom is very much part of our day at school. One of the things I'm most proud of is our kids, no matter if they get dropped off or get off the bus, they're greeted by name typically, by at least four to five adults before they even get to their teacher's classroom. Classrooms have morning meetings, they have closing meetings at the end of the day. Our whole school morning meeting is in the gym, typically once a month, and it usually has something to do with something that we're doing at school. Like last month, it was, we had a dance party to celebrate Dr. Harrison's retirement, and the kids all made posters that they held up to share, a lot of portraits of him that were so fun. And our specialists are mentors to some of our students for enrichment, which is really nice.
And that brings us to enrichment. So again, there's so, there was so many to mention that it's even hard, we missed a lot, I am sure, but just thinking about enrichment and just those different ways that you want to hook kids and find their passions at an early age. We've had an outdoor classroom for a long time. This year, the work Denise Joy, who retired, has been coming back and doing a lot of work with our hoop house, so we've been harvesting spinach. I don't even understand how there's still spinach today.
Today, yeah, right?
But they, she was outside today.
Yes.
Getting more spinach, so I think we have a lot of spinach on our hands, so just, just in a really nice way. And again, we'll do the planting of the green coming up, which is where everybody plants, and then we serve, we're doing an herb garden, where we get to use the herbs in our cafeteria. As both schools, we do, this year have the connection with the shipyard to do the Lego STEM project that has been really, the kids, kids that even, there were a couple of children that school is tough, they, that's their favorite time.
Oh, cool.
Favorite time, absolutely, so we just want to continue that. We're having author visits from PTO, we're doing Junk to Funk this year, again, hooking those students, visiting artists, their mural outside. As in all our schools, our special teachers just know how to hook the kids. We have all of them doing different activities with the children with special one-on-one. Kate Smith, just, she has a little group of kids that like to do programming, and she meets with them all the time. This year, we were doing a project with our neighbor, our Vesta Housing, they're doing, they have a grant to write stor, we're writing stories together with our third graders and their, their residents, so about their lives and connecting it to, and we're going to write books at the end. So it's a big project, and our third grade has, we've been trying to do this for a couple of years, and it's really exciting to do it now. Extensions with our GT teacher, we have mentors, we have music mentors for kids that find music to be their passion, and we have some math mentors that have come from the high school to come work with kids. So just thinking outside the box at all times of how to, how to, you know, have kids find their passion, love school, want to come to school, we just feel like that's our, that's our mission.
So as I'm standing here listening to Nina, thinking about what I didn't put up here, but these are the ones that I have. We have a really strong relationship with our Historical Society. Center for Wildlife is often visiting our school. Strawberry Bank, our second graders use that for several, or two of their social studies units, they, they visit. White Pines, they're actually come, starting this month, they're going to be doing a program with us on playgrounds, which we're looking forward to, and they're donating their time. The Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, just working out the details, but it looks like we're going to have a full STEM day at our school on March 7th, so all grade levels are going to be doing activities with people from the shipyard, and teachers are going to extend it as well. We have extensions with the Gifted and Talented Teacher. Broadtown Puppets is a favorite at our school, and that's a family group of puppeteers that write their own plays and visit, they travel in a bus. We usually have authors this year, it's Chris Van Duzen, and I could go on and on, but and none of it we could do without our parent program.
So that's really, that's what we have. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Fun?
So great. It's awesome.
Okay, you can turn that off now, because I didn't worry. So I took a different, a lot of the things, if you, if you, I could have been up here with Ann and Nina, because if you looked at intervention, and just a ton of things. But I tried to look at, okay, when I think of kiddos in school, I tried to look at a different tact, you know. So I came up with three things. You say Jerry's only talking about three things? So to me, it's all about culture, it's all about, and it's all about relationships. When you think of to engage a kid, and kids are coming, you know, from different scenarios, some kids are going to come, and no matter what happens, they're going to succeed in school. There are other kids that are going to come, and they need, you know, extra TLC. So again, they're all coming in different packages and forms and things. And so I think that for, for us, our great works, it is, we do a ton of things, and you know, I've been in front of you for years talking about this program, that program, and this program. So instead of talking about programs, I was thinking about, you know, kind of bigger umbrellas. And I said, like, one, to me, it's like, one, it's student voice. I, I think at Great Works, we really try to give kids student voice. I think if you give kids student voice, they end up having, they're engaged, okay? If they feel like, okay, I, I have a voice in something, I can say something, you know, then it's more important to me. Now, I've come to you many times and have said, this group has raised money for this. Back in December, I talked to you about the kiddos, the St. Jude's Hospital, and they, this group of kids came and they raised $350, and that was important to them. But I could talk about 15 other groups of kids in the past, and they have this, I think that they, they know that if there's something important to them, that they can, they have an avenue to be able to say, this is important, and I want to change something, or I want to add something. I would say probably half of our after-school programs are kid-driven, okay? You know, adults, we can say, let's go, let's do kickball, let's do, you know, this chess club or whatever. Now, it is, we, we offer some things we know kids are going to like, but more times than not, it is a kiddo coming to us and saying, can we do such and such? And again, I, I had a kiddo the other day, said, Ms. Malone, you know, in the, in the springtime, can we do this environmental club? And I was talking to her in the hallway today, because I heard about a kiddo at the high school that is in scouts, very much interested in this, and I said, maybe we're going to try to pair this, and she was so excited. But again, that is, I think that excites that kiddo. We're having a horrible problem in the, well, horrible, you know, sometimes I make it dramatic. We have an issue with the forts, and the fourth grade and the fifth grade having trouble rating the fort material, okay? So the kids come in, but, so they came.
Now, talk of realizations.
But just for an example, so a kiddo comes in yesterday to talk to me, and I said, go talk to Mr. Hubbard, the custodian. So this kiddo goes over and talks to Mr. Hubbard, the custodian, and so they are putting their heads together on how to create something on this particular place on the playground to fix this issue, which was really kind of building a roof, kind of a set roof on this part of the, of the fort. And so that's going to be cemented in or nailed in, and so that won't be stolen and everything else. But it is, but it's where the kids have a problem, and they feel like, you know, they have a place to go.
Yes.
And that's, and that's what comes to me. Say nothing about what comes to Mrs. Malone and the classroom teacher. So I think it is that culture that kids feel like they can do that. So I, so I think that's one thing. So, I think that's one thing. The other thing I think is, I think at great works, it's the kids can be, can belong to something that's really bigger than themselves. It is not just about them. And so, a couple examples, like this year, we did a land acknowledgement for the first time with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Anyway, four, fourth graders. And again, some of our things are school-wide. I mean, in this, this assembly was school-wide, but sometimes we do things that affect all kids, and sometimes it affects, it may affect a few kids more than others. But these four kids, this was something, there was a passion of theirs, and so they created this wonderful land acknowledgement, and it really was about the history of the Wabanaki people, but also what our job is and what we have to do. And so, they wrote this, they did it in front of the, the whole school, and then I just said, I talked to Alana Crafty, who kind of organized it with the kids. I said, "We have to have that in the plaque." I said, "That has to be put up. That is out of the mouths of babes." And so, we have the plaque, and they, these four kids are going to put this up, and now every Wednesday, we read that land acknowledgement, so kids are signing up to read that. But that's, that's bigger than themselves to me. The woodland wonder is something that is, you know, obviously, that's something all of our kids have, okay? That is something where that connection with nature and you are stewards of the land, and some kids love that. Some kids like, ah, you know, maybe not be their greatest, their greatest thing, but they know they're going on, you know, and it's, but that's, they are part of this, that, that community. We're doing a unified basketball program this year, and this is Connor Cavali and Lindsay Gorman. Lindsay said she, we've been wanting to do this for five years, and all of a sudden, they got together and said, "Let's do it." And so, we have five athletes that are doing it, and then we have fi, and then we have five kids that were hand-selected to be the helpers. And I was talking to one of the mothers of the kids that was selected to be a helper, and the mother was crying, because she goes, "My kiddo knows nothing about basketball." And she goes, "Why, why was she selected?" And I said, "Her compassion." You know, she, it's, it's bigger than basketball. And so, we just have all of these different things that we have where kids are, it's bigger than just themselves. The Kool-Aid group, you know, the Kool-Aid, that, this is a group of kiddos, that they get these experiences of field trips, community service, how to get along, how to compromise. So, it's just, I can go on. And then to say nothing about our chorus and our music programs and the Veterans Day. So, so I think we, we have, we offer those experiences. And then it's just the successes, and I think that you, where kids find success, and then they, they build upon that. Niner, Ania talked about the flex grouping. So, we flex group, we don't do it all the time. Half the time, fifth grade's flexing, then, and then, then fourth grade's flexing. Some kids love it, some kids, eh, it's okay. But those kids that love it, they make huge gains, because we're able to put a bunch of, we're a couple of adults in that room, and what happens is they gain confidence, and when they gain, when they gain confidence, they're able to, they're willing to take more risks, and when they take more risk, that's when that learning takes place, and so that's when they engage more. And so, I just think that's so important. Use that, I make notes, but, and the other thing I would say, I'll just leave with this one, is the, the math. We ended up with, we changed our whole schedule around to make sure we got 75 minutes of math this year, because with 60 minutes in our math program, it really is, it's hard to get, you know, review what you did yesterday and then do the lesson, and then you've got the independent time, and, and so a lot of part of our math program is to be able to, to work in groups, and sometimes something was getting shorted. So, we said, "We've got to expend that, extend that time." One of the things I had noticed, and I was talking to a teacher about it today, is how engaged our kids are when the teacher's not there. So, I was in a classroom, it was a co-teaching class actually, and the two teachers are trying to help kiddos all around, and the amount of times that kids are helping on their own of just, it used to be, now again, I'm sure my age, but years ago, you would go and a kid would have a question, hand be raised, teacher's over by John, and you'd just wait, 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 and for the teacher to make their way around. It's not that way now. What it is, is these kids are just, they are engaged with each other. It is phenomenal, and I'm just seeing it over and over and over again. So, I mean, I've taken kind of a different, you know, tact, a lot of the things with the folks, what Ann and I said, we do as well, but those are the things that I see, and I think they're just so important, so. Thank you.
Amazing. Thank you.
Next student report.
All right. For our sports, girls' basketball is currently going strong with an 8-1 streak. The girls have a game tomorrow at Wyndham. Boys' basketball is also having a great season. They'll have their next game tomorrow at home, also against Wyndham. Unified basketball started practicing this Monday. It was an awesome week so far, and players are super excited to get the season up and running. The wrestling team has been doing incredibly well this year. They've had a lot of first-place wins, and Cody Boobier received his 100th win at a meet earlier this month, which is super awesome for him. The Nighthawks have a game tomorrow at Cape Elizabeth. Ski Team has been working on training for their first meet, which will be this Friday, and Indoor Track has a meet tomorrow at USM. For Student Gov, we recently had a general assembly meeting, and we're working on planning an upcoming winter carnival event before February break. Committees are still working on their own smaller projects, and everything's running really smoothly for the year.
Yeah. The Spring Musical had its auditions Monday and Tuesday of this week, and the callbacks will be soon, and everyone's very excited to get started. They've announced their official show, which will be Pippin. For civil rights, the civil rights team has worked with the local nonprofit Continuum Arts Collective to put on an open mic night before break. It was a major success with lots of performers and fun raffle prizes were won. The Continuum Art Collective has been excellent in supporting Marshwood students with their exploration of the arts, and was amazing to see so many talented students shine on stage. For student life, we have midterms coming up the week of the 20th, and I know myself and probably many others are starting to prepare for those. And then we also had our NHS induction ceremony on Monday, and we welcomed 27 new juniors and seniors, so that's what we have.
Thank you.
27 new members?
Wow. That's a great. Back to Ms. Barry Court.
Thank you. That brings us to the report for the committees. Finance and Facilities will next meet on the 22nd of January. Sorry, not the 22nd.
15.
The 15th. That's right, we're meeting again next week because of school vacation. Ed Policy, next meeting will be the 29th, and well, this is an SCL met earlier this evening.
We did. We had, we met over Zoom today because of the workshop, and we followed up from last week's meeting, sort of discussing some amplifying student voice. We had a representative from, a student rep from the high school, which was great to have her input, and sort of just brainstorming, what exactly do students want from the wellness committee, from a wellness standpoint? Talked a bit about cell phones, we talked a bit about messaging, sort of what is, how can we best serve students and families from a, instead of just focus on what we think really, hearing what is important to students? So, I think we'll do some more follow-up with, with that. Did I miss anything I had to cut out a little bit early? Okay. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Includes committee reports and brings us to new business. May I have a motion, please, to approve the vision of a graduate?
I move to approve Marshwood High School's vision of a graduate.
Second, Heather.
Heather, good, thank you. Any additional discussion? I just want to quickly say thank you to everybody at the high school that put all the work into coming up with this. It's fantastic work, and we're really excited to see it come to fruition. Thank you all, all of you. All in favor?
Yes.
That's four oh. We have a vision of a graduate. Motion, please, to adopt the second reading of policy IIB.
I move to approve the second reading and adoption of policy IIB class size.
Second, Rebecca.
Okay. No changes from last time. This week, we read this just to make sure we're still good, yes?
Direct.
Comments or questions? All in favor? That's four oh, and that's done, thank you. We have only administrator check-in. Do you folks have anything else? Well, you're doing us a lot. So, you're good. Okay, we'll skip right over that. Any last comments, thoughts from the board?
No.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
All in favor? That's four oh, and we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Apologize for being late to the workshop.
No, it's okay. Yeah, you were just in your other meeting. I was thinking that would be tricky, yeah.
So, if you want to leave, all right?
Yeah, I know.
That's right. We also don't just...